...stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I think we have a full plate, so chicken's in the oven and the dip's being stirred.
Do you want to make a motion to sign the warrants?
Second. All favor.
While we're signing said warrants, if everyone is right, can I make a motion to approve the minutes of May 29th?
I'll second that, I should do it first today. We're shaking things up here.
That seems to be a question, yeah.
No, no, in favor.
Oh.
You've got me all this mumbledy, but.
There you go.
Okay, so you know, I would like to, oh yeah, I need another business message. So Renee, I would like to skip to the Jujie LLC temporary outdoor seating expansion for the marathon, so that we don't sit through this gory as old business. So is it the same as, well, what is it? Tell us it's new.
Well, actually, it's not. Well, the only thing between this year and last year is we're just moving it down one door.
And you have seats?
Yes, we'll have outdoor, we'll have, the only, that needs some explanation, the, what we're working on, the garden that we're working on outside.
Oh, so it's not that?
It's not that yet.
Oh, okay.
And the reason, just so you know, is the license I have, I'd have to have, I'd have to have a door open out into that area.
Yeah.
So I have a door waiting for me in Bangor, hopefully I pick up Sunday, it might be ready, but it might not, so I just wanted to be careful.
So it's gonna be like in the road?
It'll be like it has been in years past. So, yeah, and actually, I think originally we talked about doing it for Jujie, I don't see, but it's actually gonna be Lubec Brewing Company. So Jujie is a restaurant, Lubec Brewing Company is a tasting.
So what is your application?
So, yeah.
It's in here.
Yeah.
The tasting license holder is Lubec Brewing Company, so that's what we're.
I don't know, it's not in, I don't know, did we took it out of?
Yeah, I changed it at the, originally when Renee and I talked about doing Jujie's.
That's okay.
She was gonna do it.
She does have to send a letter, right?
I'm gonna do it.
This is it.
She was gonna do it as a restaurant for Jujie's, just.
Okay, so it's gonna be in front of Jujie's, now it's gonna be in front of Lubec Brewing Company? Because that's the way you have the rules that you can do it. But is it all down this, what, or somewhere else?
The map, I sent a revision of the map.
It's, the brewing company has moved over one, from what it used to be.
There's a map that's.
Jujie's is there is. No problem, yes, so we just need a letter from the town to approve of that spot?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just for Lubec Brewing Company, not Jujie's.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that.
No, no, I think it's a wonderful idea. And I've been watching, it literally flashes new garden.
Yes, I'm excited about that.
Yeah, that's, that's in, hopefully in a week or so.
Yeah.
So we make a motion to accept this temporary outdoor seating.
Wonderful.
Second, for the marathon day, right?
Yes, and then I'll come back when we're ready to take the picture.
Yes. All favor. Okey dokey, you're all set, we'll get it in the morning.
Go plan ahead or something.
That's fair. We're putting a fence tomorrow, I think.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it. Back to old business. Road shoulder bike path, okay? I have quite a bit of information on that. I've been working along, I don't know if you had a chance to read the contract that they, they sent us, the Butler Foundation Highway Construction Pavement Agreement. It's a little wordy and very legalese and I think overkill. I spoke to Carl about it and the main, the important, the important tenants in here, the one that was the most disturbing was Kaskus Shore, she'll have no obligation to reimburse the town where such excess costs have been previously approved by Kaskus Shore. So it's only to the $400,000. But I had some discussions with the DOT and they agreed that that wasn't the original agreement. So I think the most important, the.
So we are not going to be liable for an excess?
Well, we haven't signed anything, this is being stricken, this will, that was approved to be stricken from there. But I think the main thing is if you look at section four, or article four, the town may designate Kaskus Shore as its exclusive, it's the first one, as its exclusive representative and agent to fulfill the obligations under the MDOT agreement. It should be right, I don't know.
Page.
I don't know, wherever, these are mine.
Okay.
They're on page two.
So that, that is very important, because if we take this and make this the focal point of our agreement, then you go straight to the agreement of the DOT. And what we're trying to figure out is, if we, if it's legal, and this is what they said, that we appoint them, our agent to do this, this program. They've already hired CES as engineer. So the bids, like they do for the sidewalk, the bids have to come to the town. And we have to, you know, open them up and take a low bid. And then, at that point, then, our agent, Kaskus Shore, can work along with the bid to get the price that they want. And I was trying to figure out the best way to have the bills. So the bills should say, I believe, and we've gotten approval from DOT, that it would say Kaskus Shore LLC, agent of the town of Lubec, 40 School Street, Lubec, Maine. Therefore, the bills will come here, but we will make copies, because we need to keep copies of $400,000 with the bills to submit to the town. Well, to submit to the state. And then at such time as it comes to that, like we did with H and D, H and D's.
We have, they spent all. We spun one through.
And then, they will, in the agreement, pay all the third, as third party, they will pay them all. I don't want Suzanne to have to filter through all these and deal with that. And they'll be liable for the whole project under us, as our agent.
It could go over.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, that will be in there. If it goes over $400,000, they, they will be responsible, yes.
The, this is all on a project, what exactly is it, and putting out the bid to have someone do what?
The project is called the Municipal Partnership Agreement, State and Maine Department of Transportation Municipal Partnership Agreement. It was talked about April 30th, Select Board meeting, which I unfortunately had been recovering from maloperation, wasn't here. And Frank Mchew from the DOT showed up and explained it all to you guys. And if you can get, if, if the municipality would like to improve something on a state road, and they feel that it's, in this particular case, it'll make the road last longer, because it's five foot wide shoulders, and that'll extend the life of the road, so I guess maybe that's why they were in approval of that, but it's a 50-50 match.
What's the?
Five foot wide bike path from Whiting Corner to Red Point Park.
No, it's not, it's from, sorry. It's six tenths of a mile, it's from Red Point Park around that corner, and then it's gonna stop.
When did it not come from Whiting Corner?
Because that would be the original.
Never was.
That would, okay, all right.
It was just supposed to be, I think it was supposed to get to Crowes Next Road, so they could go down to their other property and trust it.
And that needs to be done on both sides of that stretch?
It's going to be, you can see the map here, they, I do have a map of where it's gonna be, if you want to come look at it. It's between, it, it's actually described in a, let me describe it.
So $600,000 is what it's gonna cost from Cronet Corner to Red Point Park.
On both sides of the road, not really that, here, there's the map.
Here, plus 200.
It's by West Lubec Road, correct?
It's just past, you know where the Lubec Fire Station is? Past that, there's a corner that goes up, it starts at that corner. Because it's already existing by now.
There's already existing, there's already an existing shoulder.
From Crowes Net right here.
Okay, no, that's not.
Yes, of course, that road is not on the.
That was not true.
That's one.
This is, okay, got it.
It starts right near the road Leo Murray was on, that way.
Do we know where that is? So anyway, that's what it is.
Okay, so we, we need roads paved, but now we're gonna pave bicycle patch over. They'll be in good condition. And it does hold the road together, you're right. That's because, that's because if they put down a substantial amount, it will hold shoulder the road from buck to buck.
I think that the point was that they are supporting two or three hundred children's bicycle outings from all over the county, and they're gonna come, and they're gonna come in their bus and park in Red Point Park, and then they have some place to go to, have lunch, and come back, and they don't, it's not safe. It's not safe, that's why they're doing it.
Well, I would be happy, I went to one of the DOT's outreaches several years ago, and they wanted to know what would help. And I think we have a lot of bicyclists that come on vacation, in fact, and they ride from Whiting Corner, it's probably the worst stretch on their leg of the ride here. And so one part of it will be improved.
Well, I guess.
Well, be it as small as.
It's a small park, but it is a dangerous curve, so, I mean, it is a curvy part of the road, so I think that will be helpful. The downside is if we say no, and we have it on record that we don't want to do it, and then the bicyclists go from the park down there and someone gets hurt. I don't want the town liable for that either.
I don't know how the town can be.
I'm just gonna tell you that.
Well, I wasn't here when you all voted to go ahead with this, so.
I wasn't here either.
Well, who was?
You know why?
I don't know.
Because I'm not here. Who was here October 3rd?
Well.
It was October 3rd.
No, it was way back when you talked about.
October 3rd, the DOT came, and I think all four of you were here, I'm sorry. I listened to it. You might have. All right, so anyway, going forward. It's not gonna cost the town, you know, I'm, I'm neutral on this. You know, I, I think that, I listened to what everybody wanted to do in my absence, and I read what the DOT offered the town, they thought it was a good idea, you all, whoever, maybe it was 3D1, I'd like you to check it. I would check that you're now, I don't know what you voted, I just know it's been an hour listening to the meeting. And Fred Misha came and made a big pitch on how wonderful this was, and I think you asked why it couldn't go all the way to the town. I believe that you wanted to know, it should have gone all the way to the town.
Yes, I did.
And then them, someone made a motion and seconded, and anyway, it passed. Whether you voted yes or not, there were four people here and it passed. So they've been working on it, and now to the point where the DOT has given us a contract that we have to sign. But I want their contract with us to say that they will, they will obligate themselves, they will cover everything in this contract. Everything and everything, Lubec shall, all of this, Lubec shall, shall be, our agent Kaskus Shore shall do all of this. And I believe it's legal, because of DOT.
Yes.
Is there a clear swath along this intended route of five feet without interfering with anyone's property or a utility? I mean, what did they say, nothing can be within the five feet?
There will be a right of way, that means, put it in there.
Thank you, Carol.
Anyway, it's gonna be on our meeting in two weeks, because certainly this, this particular contract that Kaskus Shore submitted to us, which, it needs to be adjusted, it needs to be simplified, it needs to be referred to the state responsibility of us, and it needs all the building to be paid by them in, in our name, so that it doesn't have to go through us twice. So we don't have any, anything other than copies of all the bills, which is what we need. In our name, that they are gonna be building this, so that they can get a 50% reimbursement. But it should be, to no work to any of the people in the town office. We're over, we're overworked as it is. And Renee has to manage the sidewalk grant, which we'll get to next. So we can table the whole thing for two weeks, so that I get it a little more simple, till we get it corrected.
Yeah, I think that's what we should do.
But is that what you want me to do, to try to get it simplified, so that in fact, we're not liable for anything over $400,000? That they assume all the responsibility for the construction, we will agree to accept the bids, because they have to come to the town. And then once the bid is, we pick a bid, well, what was one?
Yes.
We give it to them to manage. And if it goes over, then it's, they haven't, they haven't managed it correctly. We don't want to be the ones that manage it incorrectly.
And they cover the over.
So that was, that's what I, and I had a, I spent a long time thinking about it, Joanne, I wasn't like just jumping on the bandwagon.
No, honey, I know, I just, I'm totally against it, and I.
I wonder how that's presented to us, because it seems to be.
You all seem all happy with it at the end of the.
The basic presentation, if I recall, was pretty much a simple.
Yeah.
Private through the town, they'll cover it, they'll do it, town's no responsibility, it's all on him. And that's how it was presented, and that's how actually all of a sudden it's being done.
Yeah, that's how we're gonna get it back to.
And that's how, that's what we're making sure happens.
Yes, then we.
Yeah, because Misha came in, and he seemed to be okay with it, and was fine.
Remember, Misha is DOT.
Well, I just need a copy of it, I don't have.
Yeah, because that was the same night, we also had the discussion, it turned into a discussion about that corner at W Way. Which is always a nightmare. And he was talking about what's on their agendas from that Prescott service station, all the way to the bridge, is gonna get one of these giant remakes like they've done up here.
Yeah. Which is lovely.
Gorgeous.
And I think, I remember complimenting him on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. But you're right, it was a very innocuous conversation, it was.
It was completely.
Yeah, this will be tough, because they're gonna do it.
Isn't that basically the feel of the, yeah.
But then we never had this contract.
Marvin Butler's world.
Never shared.
Apparently they didn't talk.
Right, so we're, so we're gonna make sure they talk. And we, we see it in writing.
You're right, Carol, it was not presented in the way it feels like here.
Well, I think the DOT agrees with you.
Yes.
So I think that that's why we're correcting, we're gonna get that all straightened out. If it isn't what you felt like, if it isn't what it was presented, then we're not doing it.
So that was all discussion, there's no motion needed?
No, we're motioning to table it till next time.
Who did that?
I'll make the motion to table it till, till two weeks.
Why do I have to clarify that, because I couldn't remember doing anything that first week.
Well, there you go, I'm blaming, I'm totally your fault.
I'm like that slip idea, I don't remember that happening.
All in favor? All right.
None opposed?
None.
Oh yeah, any opposed? We're just tabling this, so.
No, I'm fine.
Uh, where did we get into the sidewalks then?
I don't have it, it was just done prior.
Oh, here, resident engineer, we talked about it then.
Have you picked up an engineer?
There was only one, it's not, it's a resident engineer, then we have one, one bid, one proposal.
Okay.
Revenue sharing, Renee?
So we got a bit of good news, it's a step in the right direction. The committee voted to increase revenue sharing to 3%, and 3.75% in the first and second years of planning, respectively. So that's.
So it's not the full stride everywhere?
It's better than two and a half, but the governor was gonna.
We're at the 3.0.
3.0 in the first year, and 3.75 in the second year.
Okay, so, yeah, fee schedule here?
Fee schedule, do we have to?
Vote it.
We have to vote it in.
The red is what, yeah, what was changed.
So this was, the municipal officer that here by August, we did that last year at town meeting, correct?
Yeah.
That was an article, town meeting, did he just put it in there?
It was already there, only it said, this was already there.
Okay, so everything in red has been changed? Is some of this mandated by the state, and some of it isn't?
A lot.
There's a lot of stuff, yeah.
But minimally adjusted, except as you get down towards commercial license.
Where's that?
Those changes. Change three.
Well, that was changed.
And that was already, right.
So, because that was changed, this is the third year or something, we're doing that.
Yeah, the purpose of this is to show that all the fees are represented in other ordinances, are all in one schedule, so that you don't have to file through different ordinances to find how much something is supposed to be.
And they've been taken out of the ordinances, the shelters, the heads have taken out of the ordinance, the harbor one has taken out of the ordinance, except by the committees and voted on by us. They took them out, because they, we recommended that when you put a fee in an ordinance, you have to change the whole ordinance when you change the fee, which is a legality which is ridiculous.
Yes.
So, but even Eastport has their fee schedule in their 20-page ordinance, so I'll.
I'll just call them.
But Chris Garten's been really helpful with the safe harbor. Oh, I make the motion we vote then, for the fee schedule has changed.
Yeah, second, so we.
You're all in favor? Thank you for doing that, that was a tedious job. Personnel policy, we finally got the personnel policy updated. And. Everything in red, I think we all talked about, and some of the things that have already been voted on in Select Board meetings that have been reflected. Like one, for example, would be if you're a new employee. You get, a full-time employee, you get your insurance paid, but your spouse or family's half, 50%, and that's something. So that's, all of that has been reflected and updated, another key is job by Renee.
Full-time is 40 hours.
Full-time is now 40 hours, not 37 and a half, not 32. Oh, 32, right, not 32, you're right, that's very low. So.
A lot of gatherings for this, so.
There were.
Very, very. I would like to make, go right.
I would show move that we pass the changes in the personnel policy, and may have to live on forever.
Second?
Second.
Joanne's second.
That's another legacy.
All favor?
Yeah.
See, so on the same lines as personnel policy, we've been given a social media guideline, it's a policy and a guideline. It's a little bit different, because it's for elected officials, and also do you add employees?
You can have the family, take it back out, move back and pay us on that.
Oh, okay, well.
Let's speak for ourselves right now.
Yeah. So, has everybody been given this and looked at? So we need a motion to accept the prepaid guideline, it's a guideline only. But it certainly gets you, it's caused to, I think the gist of the whole thing is.
It's caused to cause.
No, no matter where you put anything on social media, it can be captured and shared to anywhere or anybody. So it's not particularly personal. We don't know people would like it to be, it's, it's a little bit frightening, actually.
And we are selective, 24 hours a week.
Yeah, okay, but it's just, so do we want to adopt this as an elected official?
Yes.
Use of social media.
I would vote that we adopt this.
Try, try to abide by the policy?
Yes.
At least try to.
I think we should.
All right, so, you made a, who made the motion?
I did.
Who seconded it? All favor? You know? Somebody wants to go, do you want to go? Where's your place?
Who?
You're going to hockey field?
No. I have, I have some.
Dinner arrangements. WWWTPDEP grant update. Yes, for sure, it should be, but it's not in there yet.
Happy news.
I think everything's been happy so far.
So you know, a little while ago, we were approved for one of the grants from the DEP for the wastewater treatment upgrade. It was for 200 and something thousand, not, it was just a drop in the bucket. Well, due to other towns not accepting their bid, or their grant.
I'm sorry, that was just such an interesting choice.
She did that on purpose.
They increased it to 400,000.
Yeah.
She has puns, a gift for puns.
Play on words, yes, lovely.
So 250, and she says, she said to Ford because she had a royal flush in her hand.
Ah, yes, from the toilet, old comes out well.
A royal flush.
Jesus, you guys.
We just, we just passed this civil.
You are, because you know it's a little more serious where you're going.
The sun comes out, and you never know, just things.
Oh, it's just such a beautiful day.
All right, too, safe harbor shore, okay, so we got, we got a shore and harbor grant, the maximum was 30,000, and we did get that. We also got $4,000 from the Ram Island Conservation Fund, and a $50,000 pledge letter for a continued perpetual maintenance fund. So the letter's in the mail. So that was good news. And we're, Julie and I are working feverishly along with the site, safe harbor committee, and all of the town has come out to give us help. Everybody has given testimony, it's just, it's just amazing. I don't know if you ever saw that movie, Norma Rae, Soundgarden? It's like, there's 100 people that have signed, and everybody's going to Julie with my skip fellow, I fell off my bow, it's amazing. And all of it is so instrumental in proving that we need a safe harbor, so we're hoping.
I think it's, it's a monumental task that you've undertaken.
The whole town is, is hoping we don't disappoint them, but you've just gotta try, right?
That's right, that's right.
Well, I'm happy, I'm happy for it. So next, we got the resident engineer Washington Street Sidewalk Project, and we only got one, I guess the person that you sent, sent it back. And over in the, it's around.
So the way, I mean, this is just a technicality at this point, you don't have to wait for this, because there's only one bid. But you're supposed to open the technical proposal of everybody, an award on technical proposal, not price, it doesn't matter.
Are there two different ones?
Yeah, that's, the price, that's. So if we had more than one.
The price is not negotiable?
Well, it is, in the end, the price is negotiable, but you need to award a bid on this project based on qualifications. So this and this.
And it is, just as a point of emphasis, it is this person who would be the engineer for this person?
The resident engineer, the person that is on site, making sure everything is done as it should be.
And this would be the person that Paul, for instance, would discuss his issues.
Yep, yep. And Jason, I wish you to see if the T is the one that is so familiar with all the resident engineers, so.
Yeah. As a point of clarification, Paul.
So can we see the price?
Yeah.
Let's make a motion to accept this person's technical proposal, since we don't have a second. Second?
Second.
Who made the motion?
I did.
I second, she second, we all second. Do you say that's Southwick or Southit?
Southwick.
Clearly, you'd say Southit.
Oh, I like that.
It's like war, we have to battle some war. Yeah.
Too much tape on it. So I, my question to you is, I spent a long time talking to the DOT today about the sidewalk project, because it's been delayed. And I don't see anywhere where this expenditure was put in the budget, so. And you're thinking that it's part of the construction phase, is that what you're thinking, Renee? It's part of the construction phase?
Construction or engineering? Engineering, it's done.
Well, so then it's just the technical engineer that's making sure that the engineering that we, engineer we hired, CES, is doing their job. So they're just representing us. And are they doing the day's vacant wages and all that other stuff? I mean, that's what they're doing. The DOT, and explain to the board why we're having to hire this person. If you were the one that told me about it with the DOT.
They actually mandate somebody that's certified like this to be on, to make sure gravel is, the amount of gravel that's brought in, is the right amount of gravel, it's the type of, you know, little things.
So they deal with a firm that they're used to, and that have been vetted?
Right, and they.
Well, they're on the list.
They have a list of eligible people that can apply for the position.
And these people are the only ones?
No, they were five that I sent the bid to, the RFA to, and this is the only one that responded.
Okay. Eight weeks at 40 hours a week. Thirty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy. Could be worse. Well, it was kind of like, remember when we were building the garage, and we had to have the cement poured? And we could have, we could have paid an engineer $1,000 a day to come, to drive all the way down to look at the cement and pour in a little tube. But what we did was, we hired the, the people that tested the cement to come up. Spend the night, and go back, and we saved like $4,000 every time we had to pour. So, you know, unless, well, if someone wants to micromanage this, then we're gonna pay somebody. I happened to have done the garage thing, and it was time-consuming, and I'm busy, I can't. I happened to have done the garage thing, and it was time consuming and I'm busy, I can't do it.
But it almost sounds like these things are wrapped up. They're all a done deal with the Department of Transportation.
C E S, they didn't use to ask for this.
Really?
Yeah. But.
At one point, can you counter offer?
We can counter offer. I mean, I mean, you can. But I think that the time to counter offer would be, the problem with the bids going out right now is that they, we may have very high bids because if we're trying to get.
Competitive, yeah.
Well, because it's the end of the, it's the end, it's been delayed. And let's say they put the bid in the paper in two weeks, and they give it three weeks to come back, and two weeks from now is the twentieth of June, and then another three weeks is July fifteenth. And so one of the things they were talking about today is to have it go from either starting September first or starting in early in the spring to get it done before the tour season comes next year. And I'm thinking, it would be nice if we had either or, but you don't want it left in the middle, half done. So that's, that's where they're at with the page on the R F P. This point, do we?
Michael Burns says, if you are satisfied, the firm is qualified, open the price proposal and negotiate if needed. So it tends to negotiate.
Well, so we're just reading what it was, and we haven't accepted the bid. We can go back, we can counter offer. We also need to talk about his availability in the spring.
You don't want to do this in the fall.
Well, I don't know, because tell me how easy it is to get a contractor or carpenter to do anything right now. So I imagine, you know, it's the state of Maine, and how many people are just sitting there waiting to build a sidewalk in the middle of July? They probably have their work cut.
Well, I thought you said it would start in September. If, if we were to choose that.
Takes about six to eight weeks after the bids go out.
For them to even mobilize.
Bids aren't even.
So July fifteenth, August fifteenth, September fifteenth.
So you're fearful that the bids come in for the week fall, they don't want the work so bit high?
No, they're, it's not that they don't want the work, they're busy, and so they can demand more, supply and demand.
Bit high, right.
Yeah.
This is an eight-week project?
That's what he's billed it out as, eight weeks, that he's overseeing it for eight weeks.
Well, I mean, I realize, you know, which is, but you want to avoid certain situations when you've got events planned. And so you put that eight weeks on that calendar in the busy time of the season, a lot of people.
We talked about that two years ago. When we sat down with initial planning, with the D O T. When we had the planning stage of this, we made it very clear that it could not be in July and August. Because it's our high, height of the tour season.
So everybody's still on board with that.
So you could, if you went September through September, through November?
Yes, if we could get September, September first till the end of October, fine, but I guess it's really up to the contractors bidding on it. So they're at the stage where we could. They haven't decided what they're going to say. The O T was a little bit.
We're just waiting, right?
A little bit frustrated. No, we can, we can ask. It's our, it's our project. Do you want to think bids for the fall, or do you want to, my suggestion was to have, have a choice of two bids. One, they could either bid then, or they could bid in the spring. And we, maybe the spring one would be cheaper. That, that was just a suggestion I had. But what do you, what do you think?
I think it's not.
Because maybe they, you know, someone that's busy this year would jump to have already a project, a federal project in May, you know? Or April fifteenth to June fifteenth, because that would be a good time.
Yeah.
By June fifteenth being, I think they were saying it had to be done by June thirtieth. But even if it was done by June fifteenth, it would be better, because we have the marathon.
That's right.
And in the meantime, we've got to ask for twenty-one more thousand dollars from the town that they could go down.
It's over.
Yeah, you, you want to put yourself in a situation where they're doing the sidewalk and the marathon is going on?
Well, the right of way went twenty thousand dollars over. The negotiations for the right of way went twenty thousand dollars over.
What if that happens with the bike path?
That's not, that's not going to be our responsibility.
That's what, that's what we were saying.
That's what I'm saying.
Ask for them to cover it.
The people need to know when they submit the bids, if they are working under our agent public shores, and that they have to come to an agreement with them.
Something, yeah. Okay, but
But as far as the sidewalk.
I understand you're saying spring. I just don't want spring to run into a marathon, you know, if they should start.
Well, I think that they, that if we give them a choice and say that, or we can just say that we want it in the fall and see what happens. But I think that you're going to get, you're going to get real competitive, you're not going to get competitive bidding. You're going to get top dollar supply and demand bidding, because.
Let's just play it out. Let's just see what happens.
Well, you're never going to know if you're going to get a cheaper price if you don't. They, they, D O T suggested, there was, we had an ongoing conversation between this and the Butler Foundation. I didn't get a lot of safe harbor done. He suggested that we have, that it, that when it, when they start, they have to be done in eight weeks. So they can't like start in the fall and then just leave all their stuff.
Till spring.
And then come to the spring. So that's something they did put in the R F P.
Yeah.
So.
You know what concern would be, bad winter, late something, and they're like, oh, with frost, whatever it be, we need to wait until.
They do.
Unexpected, so now we can't start till May tenth, and next thing you know, you're.
Well, yeah, except do you remember what May tenth was like this spring? I mean, it was, we were still talking about snow.
Yeah, it wasn't very pleasant.
Right, so when you start going eight weeks from May tenth, you're in trouble.
So maybe we just get this bid right out and hope that we can get it done in the fall.
I think so. I think it would be at least disruptive.
And don't give them the option.
Yeah.
So.
I just think we're, we're playing Russian roulette if we go in the spring. I just.
Yeah, but then that, that option should not be on the table at all.
It'll get delayed.
So then we start, we want to finish by October thirtieth. Is that, is that, is that how, how we, do you like that idea, Joanne?
Yeah.
I mean, you're.
So that's, that would be September first.
Or November fifteenth, or something like that.
Yeah.
You could probably, by the time, if week seven and eight is the first two weeks of November, I'm imagining most stuff will have been, they're doing dressings and things that last week, so.
September fifteenth to November fifteenth.
Yeah.
Be good if we get past Labor Day.
Stay away from Labor Day.
Labor Day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which could be.
Anytime. Anytime after.
You know Labor Day, like the second or third or something? So you might be able to, you might be able to do the eighth or, you know, start that following week.
So, so right now it's June.
September twelfth.
September second is Labor Day, so you could start the ninth.
So we, I mean, we need to communicate that with the, with the engineers, that they took that out, that the page is what, what we're looking for, the dates. But it's going to start when we want it ended, and we've looked at this, this is an eight-week thing, they feel like, and see if we get any bids. If the bids are outrageous, we can't afford it anyway.
Yeah.
How's it going to work if there are twenty-one more thousand dollars more now, how's it going to work? If you don't get it?
Well, I'm hoping, Paul, that we get a bid in, and then we take it to town meeting in August seventh. Because it's just about the right timing. And then we put it to the town this way, which I did last year. This is what it's going to cost us extra, and this is what they have into the project. So if we all want to vote to the project down, you know, no, no sidewalk, we would owe the state this much money. Which is, were you at the town meeting last year?
I was working, Carol.
I'm sorry. So this is what we talked.
I'm sorry.
I mean, I, I, we all have to work hard in the summer. But we, we put it to the town, and it was such, we had put forty thousand dollars away. They had put about sixty-eight thousand into the project, or something of that effect at that point. So we either had to ante up the other thirty to make seventy for our share, or we had to pay them back the sixty-eight thousand, which made us a total wash, and we never got anything. We're back to, we're back to the same thing now. Now, we, we have twenty-one thousand, we've only spent twenty-one thousand of our seventy. But they are projecting that it's going to cost a hundred and five thousand dollars over, which is twenty-one thousand to us. So now they have, and I went on the phone today, and I, I got, actually, I have, I have exactly what they've spent. They spent, including what C E S has spent in the last month, approximately eighty-seven thousand dollars between the D O T and the engineering. So we have seventy thousand set aside, of which we paid seventy thousand about. So that money set aside for the sidewalk, that would go back to the state, along with any overage over seventy thousand, which would be seventeen thousand. So now we're back to, okay, it's now town meeting, it's August seventh. We are, we either need another twenty-one thousand, or we need to pay the state seventeen and never have a sidewalk. And that I put toward the town last year. I'm not making that decision. No one in the select board, I think, wants to make the decision to put it down. That's where we're at. And that's going to be at the town meeting. We're not going to go forward with this project until they, they understand the situation we're in. It's like, it's, it's really a conundrum. It is, Paul. I, I have to, I have to agree with you there.
Yeah, it's quite multiple.
This was sound, this was signed in two thousand thirteen, the year before Dan and I got in, in here. And it seems to have been plaguing, plaguing us ever since.
And I don't think the twenty-one thousand is going to cover the concrete.
It's not going to cover.
That's for asphalt. And if town wants concrete, you have to pay for that.
It may be a total moot point, because when we get the bids, because we got, the, the, the D O T literally, Paul, has to go back to the drawing table to see if they have their eighty percent of the overage. So I would highly suggest you come to the town meeting, August seventh, and, and weigh in on the project. So as far as today goes, we, we just need to get a bid out there. We, we need, well, if we can just remember what happened with the sand and salt shed and the garage. Sewell told us it would be six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that all the bids were a million, a million. And it was, so I don't even want to like spin my wheels to see what the bids are.
Prior to that, with being an article at the annual town meeting, is it necessary for us to have a public hearing for a special town meeting regarding that? And is there enough time for the necessary notification?
I think, Mike, that it's time perfectly for the, like, annual meeting, just by the. By the, I can hear.
But you were talking, George.
He's having a hearing, you should.
Gee, really? Okay, lost my train of thought, sorry.
My, my.
What are you talking about?
Town meeting, see, I could hear while, while that record was going.
Okay, so you take over. So, okay, back to this. So right now, it's a couple of weeks to get the bid process out. So that's going to bring us to the end of June. Then three weeks for the bids to come in, which is going to be the third week in July. This is, this is all best case scenario. Let's say it's the end of July, we open the bids, we got one week to annual meeting. Well, we'll take it to town meeting.
Can you?
What do you mean, can we? We have to.
Can you put a decision on, as an article, on annual town meeting?
We did last year, the same exact thing. Same exact thing we put in there. Can we, can we, do you vote to appropriate thirty thousand more dollars for our share in the sidewalk project?
And ramifications of a no vote means we've lost a whole bunch of money, and we're not doing this unless we come up with it on our own.
Well, you know, you know what, Mike?
Is that what you said?
Such a thing as cutting your losses, so we really need to, we really need to look and see what.
It's unfortunate that it was money set aside by the taxpayers for a good cause, but when we got involved with the state on this, they sucked all that money away. We could have had forty thousand dollars for the sidewalk.
And then they don't give you enough.
Yeah. It was signed by the previous select board, with John Sutherland here.
Welcome to the state of Maine, babe.
Wow.
And the cost of the whole project went up every year, and they, apparently, they only, they only got a grant for the, for the pre-production and engineering part of it. It wasn't until this year that it was funded for construction, that I recall. It's a, definitely a.
So do we have to make a motion for any of the?
Kenny Rogers. He's got to know when to hold them and.
I'd like to make a motion that I can take thirty seconds and put this paper into this envelope.
Because he has to have this obsessive.
I'm a little compulsive, let me get it done. Thank you.
Let me get it done.
They need to sound like Kansas.
I'm sorry, it's, it's, it's a lot to swallow, it's very.
Clean up and find your property.
Well, if we got a cutter, we got a cutter.
I think that the only fair thing to do would be to take the bid, the lowest bid, along with what has been spent, and present it to the town and say, okay, this is the truth of the matter. And we will not know that until we get the bids back. We might as well go out to bid.
Let's go out for the bids.
And let's make it that it's done by November fifteenth.
Let the, let the town decide, yes.
As the great philosopher Kenny Rogers said, you've got to know when to hold them and know when to fold them, right?
I told you a long time ago.
Well, we had one other choice last year.
It's a lot easier said than that.
We could have done it last year, but we still would have owed them whatever they had in, was sixty-eight thousand. We'd have no money now. Either way, they would have eaten up our funds, so it's a catch twenty-two.
I think I could speak for the whole board, and I can say, we'd be glad when this project is done.
Yes.
And I want it done, so I'm not going to be happy with asphalt, so whatever. No, but, and we can't afford that. Resignation of the countercourt. On a sad note.
Yes.
Mary is going to be leaving us August first, and so we need permission to put an advertisement in the paper to hire someone.
Yes, we can.
Because there is going to be a D O T, D M, D M V, D.
B M V.
B M V, I'll get it. B M V training, July twenty-third and twenty-fourth, so we need to get somebody on board. In the T I A board, so. So, motion, second, all in favor?
I'm like, say Mary for her.
So we're going to, and yes.
She's, she will be missed.
We will think. And so for, so just say Fridays for sure, every Friday, and then when needed, one or two times a week, or for vacations.
Yeah. So that also creates a, a job here for the ambulance, right? Yeah.
Yep, she's going to be missed.
Taxes, tax-acquired property.
Okay.
So first of all, the second one. So we have two properties that we proposed on. One of them has a house. And the procedure is to notify the person that they have twenty-one days to get their personal effects out. So that was done by certified mail. It was returned. The twenty-one days is coming gone.
So now we're putting it out to bid?
Yeah, I'd like to just put it out to bid, content included.
But what is?
You didn't want to touch those contents?
Which?
It's the blue house down on South Quebec Road on the right, your farmhouse.
Okay. And what do you suggest we put it out to bid for?
So the taxes at this time for that property, this is at two ninety-seven South Quebec Road.
What's the lot it's sitting on? How big is it?
It's Matt twenty-two lot twenty, one point two eight acres, can you guess?
Yes, I can.
So at this time, taxes owed are forty-five hundred-ish. You have to also count for next year's taxes, we'd add that into it, so.
So six thousand.
It's a little over six thousand mark, so maybe sixty-five hundred.
So you want to do a minimum bid of seventy-five hundred? Seventy-five hundred? Minimum bid of seventy-five.
But Mary's a structure and a house, so this one you can put, you did, you did the log cabin for fifty thousand.
But you said, what's the house like? Did you bring us a picture?
A house picture?
I'd like to see a picture of it.
We'll pick some.
I'm saying maybe the neighbors on either side would be interested.
Okay.
The condition of the place might be a tear down.
Have you seen it, Mike?
Yeah, I don't think you should go.
What do you think of it?
I don't think you should go crazy. It's much like personal opinion, but.
Yeah, I agree. Get, get it sold.
Yeah, yep.
There are places, there are municipalities, and there are Gulf of Countries and towns that are giving property away like this, and the deal was, I was reading about it, that they, they give it to someone who puts away five thousand dollars, and they have to spend it on rehabilitating it, and they have to live there for five years. I, it's a really interesting.
Might not be worth that kind of a program.
But you know what I'm saying?
I, I've heard something like that, yeah.
It's an interesting way to get people to come back to your town on an abandoned building.
Oh, that is, yeah.
It's not too bad. Maybe we, I don't know.
It's two-story, there's a garage.
Well, what about the outside? Did you take it neutral, the outside?
Is there a cellar?
Yeah, I didn't go in it.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it looks like it could very possibly be a wet cellar. Yeah, I, I know the house.
We used to have animals outside.
My cat came from that place.
Oh, really? Okay, so anybody have a better suggestion for?
I think seventy-five hundred is great.
Yeah, it could go up.
Because people may bid on it, you know, that, that's a minimum.
Right.
You know, people might fix their uppers. They might, you know, might, might be twenty. I mean, if you put it too high, you don't get anything, and then you have to do it again. Okay, so we, motion second. All in favor?
Motion who?
I'll make the motion second. All in favor?
We have to list it for...
Minimum, seven, five hundred. Minimum bid. Yeah, and to be back in what, four weeks or...
Four weeks.
Oh, what? Four weeks. When's the next paper out?
Two weeks.
Four days.
It's coming out this week.
So this week's is left to next, so two weeks.
Two weeks from now, yeah.
Twenty-six, twenty-eight.
So we'll put it towards the end of July.
What the heck is this?
Make it soon, because in the summer, people wanna buy stuff. They did it too far in the fall.
Thirty days from the twenty-eighth.
Okay, we have to do thirty days, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so offices closes.
Wait, wait, we've done another one, another property.
Oh, we have another property?
Yep, there were two properties.
Oh, is that the, the trailer?
Yes.
Did that get us?
There's another property.
Yeah.
It's on there.
Doran. It is Straight Bay Road, fifty-four point eight acres. This is, um, you've got...
It's Bonnie Lions, it's in...
Yeah. So the taxes owed is, uh, June sixth were two thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars thirty-five cents. Add around nine hundred, twenty-nineteen's taxes, we're looking at around four thousand.
And how many acres? Fifty-four. Four on, there's a couple of trailers, but there's people living on it.
Right.
And it's being so bided off with, with tenants? And we can do that, correct? Hopefully the tenants will bid. We can legally do that, right? We checked for that.
Hopefully the tenants bid.
What are we opening the bid at?
I'm not gonna say anything at the time. I don't know.
So what was the question?
Uh, it's the tax assessed value. What was the assessed value on that other house? Just for the heck of it, the block they should have.
Forty-six thousand? Fifteen thousand alone? Oh, that's fifty-five thousand.
The seventy, the seventy-five hundred. Well, we get, you know, we see what the bids are. We can, we can reject the bids, right?
Well, we've done that before. We did that with, um...
We can reject the bids. You can take any or reject them all if they're too low.
Yeah, we've done that before.
Okay, fine.
And then actually, at that point, then we also raised the minimum.
Yeah, we can raise the minimum. So thirty-six thousand ninety is the assessed value of this land.
Yes.
Taxes are what?
They owe four thousand. But there, but there's issues, you know, there's, there's, there's tenants.
So let's put it out for four thousand and see if they are able to...
I'd say how about five?
Do that.
Five.
Well...
No.
You've got people on there that...
If people on there wanna make the bid, those just can't get back.
Oh, they, oh, I see. You're trying to see if you can get them to buy it back.
Four thousand would be good.
And then they're gonna, but what if they don't pay again?
Well, I mean...
I'm, I'm gonna go with your suggestion. Sue's seconded it.
I'll take it. Motion by the man, four thousand.
Rachel seconded it.
Seconded, Rachel.
And then another three years, you might...
Put that all in favor, or we'll...
Yes, yeah, no, no, I mean, that's fine. That makes sense, because they're trying to keep it with people that would, hopefully they can get it back.
Okay.
Offices closes June twenty-eighth.
Year end.
And what day of the year is that? I mean, what day of the...
Friday.
Friday, Friday.
We skipped one.
Stockford dedication stones, 'cause they checked it all already.
So we've got communication from Denise Rule, who's on our economic development committee, and Rachel, with Jesse Salisbury, who was involved with the Big Step sculpture down at Stockford. And he is, is going to be able to etch into a boulder room to put in the Donald Stockford plaque that we've got and have it adhered to that boulder and have the monument finished.
Awesome.
We'll work with Public Works with the best placement for it in the park. If you will, just leave that for our art installation and Public Works expression, probably.
Awesome.
But, yeah, his quote is six hundred dollars. And the money that came in from the benefactor from the town beautification was, is going to cover all this.
Good. And Denise and I are going down there on the twenty-fifth of it.
It would be great to get that project done, yes.
Where that big boulder is now, is there any way that that can be hauled out and then the other one put in? Because that's a nice spot right there. Public Works.
Yeah. He put, they put it there for the stone.
I thought they did. But it's not big enough. I don't think that's...
No, no, no. So we'll remove it.
It's not big enough.
And either put it there or towards the middle of the parking lot. I don't know.
Oh, yeah, maybe in the middle of the parking lot.
Do you have a... Not, you know, in the grass.
Do they have a copy of this in the thing, because I want Grandma Graham, I go look at my, you know, that's my message.
No, they don't. Sorry, that came as an act of...
All right. Oh, I'm gonna read it. You're gonna tell me. I think I'm gonna defer to Grandma, the man who put errors from...
Okay.
I didn't bring my red pen, but I can.
Oh, it's like men, you know.
But that's what I have to sign.
Yeah, we're gonna do that.
Sign in the office.
We can do that. We'd like to take this opportunity to thank the community for their support throughout the year. Many accomplishments would not have been completed without the help of all the many volunteers and community members, committee members, that tirelessly devote their time and energy and will improve in our quality of life. From spring cleanup to winter snow, we will, we are grateful to the Public Works, Ricky, Timmy, and Robert, who miss holiday gatherings and nights off to keep us safe. Safe, I got my own. That's an F. What would, what would we all do without their dedication to our safety? We would like to thank our dedicated town staff, Debbie and Mary, and our town administrator Renee, and our tax collector and treasurer Sue Deb, who all work tirelessly to keep this town going, often with no or little appreciation. This appreciation also includes Kenny in the recycling department, Bruce in the sewer treatment plant, Gary as our co-defortment officer, Rhonda as our animal control officer, Ralph as our harbor master, Marlene as our health officer, and last, but not least, Jim as our tax assessor. Lastly, let us be thankful that we live in the most beautiful town in the easternmost point of the United States of America. May we all enjoy the blessings of this wonderful community. I have that last pair fresh.
Very nice, honey.
So, is that okay?
That's lovely.
Please just double check everything.
Absolutely.
No, I think it's a little bit wordiness on that first one, and too many letters in it. But, and then we'll, we'll sign it, we can sign it next time, right? Because we don't need it in till the end of June. So if you can just help...
Could not, I can't.
Yeah, just face it a little bit. I'm sure he's a little bit like that. Any public comment?
Oh, I had one thing.
You did?
Public Works has replaced all the boards that were so deteriorated on the picnic table, the Stockford part, with pressure-treated wood, and they look fantastic. So Father's Day is coming up this weekend. It'd be a great place to go down and have a picnic and a barbecue. The barbecues are there, and it'd be a great place to have a family.
That is really would be a lot of...
It is really nice.
I can't believe they fixed it so nice. Have you seen it?
What?
Stockford Park, it's all fixed up.
No.
They straightened the tables out and put new tops on. I know, I haven't seen it. I haven't...
They just finished it today. Cut off the brass.
Truly nice.
I have a brand-new flush if they need one.
Oh, cool.
Really? So what do we do then?
Uh, community, uh, community. Committee updates, um, June twenty-fourth, Downey's air mass, four-thirty, maybe that's all.
Um, we're scheduled for the recycling to meet Friday, but I was discussing this with Renee, that I would like to cancel that because we are still waiting for more updates from China and Washington. Okay?
Oh, we're right on that.
And when we all get together...
We're right on that, Rachel.
Yes. Got the red phone right there at my desk.
Our office, I believe, we have ten of us scheduled for Monday, July eighth at three o'clock. There is on June nineteenth at four o'clock, the AOS ad hoc meeting, June nineteenth at four. My Willard Scott moment, I'd like to wish all you fathers out there, as we pass into next weekend, a happy Father's Day weekend. And also to pass on, um, there is a event tomorrow, oh, board event. Right, am I set tomorrow? Something, something's tomorrow.
There's an emergency meeting tomorrow at the War Care.
But their budget, the budget meeting is gonna be on the twentieth, right?
The twentieth, and that's a vote at the school.
Okay, so I wanna get down, I wanna get down with the budgets, budgets next Thursday. Right?
Yep.
Okay.
School board at five and the budget at six.
Okay, and that's down at the school.
Right, on the twentieth.
Yeah. Everybody got any other...
And that's a budget. Thinking of that, oh, sorry, go ahead, Dan.
And so are there any other events or, I know Downey Salmon Federation tomorrow, it co-hills at six o'clock. It's having a little event.
Marathon next week.
Yeah, marathon.
Yeah.
You have some tomorrow at five.
Safe Harbor, last, the last public meeting for Safe Harbor is gonna be tomorrow at five.
And even on our development, even though we're not meeting as regularly, Denise and I are going to these other things, like on the twenty-fifth for economic development, where there will be more people who are doing the same thing for broadband.
And you're, and you're going to the thing with the land, with the name on the land trust.
The conservation, yes, yes.
Yeah, so, right.
Yeah, it seems, we, we don't meet as a meeting, but we're doing all kinds of...
And we're working on broadband, that's important.
Oh, my God, yes.
So I think also we have Harbor Board is at, as always, the third Monday at six, which is next Monday. Right? Where, where are we? What's the...
Harbor Board at six, the seventeenth, yeah.
The seventeenth. And then the Shellfish, um, Shellfish is the night, Monday the first. And that's when all the licenses go on sale, July first. So if you, if you're missing a meeting, you know, you can just like go to the meeting that night and get your license the next day. Anybody who's been grandfathered in as non-resident needs to, needs to buy their licenses a week earlier at the town office, and then we will give them a call. I believe there's two, if not three, out of the ten percent we are required to sell. We require to sell either ten or ten percent, whichever more. So we, I think we have seven grandfathered non-residents, and the rule is you'll have to have three out of five licenses. You'll have to own three out of five years of Lebec licenses to, to be grandfathered in. So, that's it?
I have one thing.
That's it?
Yeah. Recall, do you recall the meeting that Jason asked to have set up with the town officials in Whiting area, from all the towns, to create one voice, send a guster on effects of land conservation?
What was that?
So that's been done, um, July twenty-third at Whiting at six P.M.
On Sunday?
Tuesday, July twenty-third.
When's our next meeting?
Yeah.
When is the Tuesday?
Yes.
Oh, July twenty-sixth.
Yep.
That's it.
That's it.
Okay, right.
Is Jason about there at three?
What was the time when that hit?
Six.
It's six p.m.
Yes.
That you and I are doing that conservation thing too?
Yes, she told me. Can I keep this just a review for you?
Yeah, I'll, I'll...
So I'm just gonna review the purchase and the residency.
Thank you, Michael, adjourned.
Second.
I just have one more thing. Just one more quick thing. Um, when we had the, when the school board, um, we went through that abstraction process.
Yes.